Also, we need to put in a bunch of baked food for him, so I'm putting in three.
Numerous times at Riverside and knows the water line layout well. He stated he knows of at least six leaks in the water line and the lines are galvanized. He stated plumbing code requirements requires those to be replaced, not repaired. He added that he knows the sewer system to be unserviceable as well as gas leaks. He stated Martin would answer his calls and requested Kurt call him after the meeting. Kurt was advised the city would not use him as a pass between and that he could relay to Martin that Martin needed to contact the city to resolve the issues. It was determined the best course of action was to document violations for the city to be prepared to take legal action regarding plumbing code and existing residential code violations and to address living conditions in the park. Slayback stated he would call Jade and relay to him the contract, the city administrator, and contact the city administrator directly. And then we adjourned.
And I can give you a quick update since then. And we have been in contact with Jade Martin. And he advised that he is going to make a trip up here from Florida to walk through the Mobile Home Park with Greg. And Mr. Slayback, in the minutes, his name is spelled incorrectly, so I do apologize to him for that. But he's been, he was correct in that Jade would answer his calls because he called me about 10 minutes after the meeting and said he had talked to Jade. And then later Alan and I made a phone call to Jade and he did answer the phone, said he was going to come up here. He was going to make a payment that he was, he knew that they were behind their sewer payment, which was between both properties, about $22,000. And most of that really was due to, is due to leaks because it's, the bills are a lot higher in the last four or five months than they had been. So I know Greg has been in continual contact with Kurt and they've done some more walkthroughs at the park. And that today Joseph Porcelli, who is the owner, called up here and made a $15,000 payment toward the back payments on that. So we'll see if they actually come up here. We also learned, we did get the return from the FOIA, we spoke to the Department of Public Health. And that FOIA indicated that Riverside was inspected in 2024. It was approved for licensing, had a number of violations indicated on it. Sandy Creek was not approved for licensing and that's been since 2024. So like Alan and I, we were talking that if Sandy Creek hasn't been licensed since 2024, then obviously the Department of Public Health isn't overly interested in pursuing consequences regarding that. So we, like I said, we have had contact with the, with the manager now and we'll see if we can get some action out of him. And they did pay us a pretty significant amount of back payment for Riverside, so.
Can I ask, where does the owner live?
Fort Ritchie, Florida.
Okay, so the manager lives in Florida too?
Yep, Orlando.
They're not very hands-on.
No, and we're not.
Yeah. So that's kind of where it sits.
Okay.
I was through there about a week ago. There's a lot that needs to be done to bring that up to habitable standards and that. I can't believe people are living in some of those things.
No kidding.
It was just appalling. And at one time, that was a pretty nice place, but.
Times have changed.
Times have changed.
And it looks like they're changing for the better. So I'm sure Jim and Greg will keep on top of it.
Okay.
Speaking of Frank, Infrastructure Committee meeting.
Since I was absent, I will hand it off to John Willie, who ran the meeting.
Infrastructure Committee met at 6:20 on April 30th. City Administrator, myself, Mr. Bob, Mr. Andrew, we're here, as well as the mayor, Jason Lee, Barb Howard, Chris Brock, and Greg Knowles. First, we discussed Sentinel Plaza, discussion about agreeing that the project should be let out for bids again to allow for more time for general contractors to obtain pricing. This will be brought before the council this evening. The socket was Chris Brock brought to our attention, problem on North Locust Street. There have been several complaints about semi-traffic on North Locust Street where the road is not designed for that type of traffic. It's because drivers are trying to find the LSC loading docks. Brock suggested posting North Locust Street as no trucks and improving sign access for drivers to follow for LSC loading. This too will be presented for the, to the council for approval. And then we adjourn.
Or note one amendment to this, that it says Chairman Jovanini called the meeting to order and that I will change that to Vice Chair Willie.
Thank you for the update. Okay. Moving on, because it's a rather lengthy day today, it calls for mayor's comments. Well, my comments are, this is my last meeting as mayor. And I'd just like to say, I have about 18 pages here, so feel comfortable. It won't be that long, though. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Pontiac and the citizens. I started out as a zoning board, was on the city council for several years, and then into the mayor's office. We've had a lot of success and we've had a few failures along the way. But our greatest success has always been in the people we have working for the city. We have an outstanding group of people who are always front and center at every occasion, good, bad, or whatever. And I can't tell you what a great team the city has. And most of that has been the responsibility of our city administrators, Bob Carles, Jim Woolford, and they put together a great team. The city council, past and present, people have been on the council. You know, I go back to, I go back to Frank Pano, who spent 57 years on the council. I see Bill Callis, who's wrapping up 42 years, the council. That takes dedication, perseverance, and sometimes, you know, they fall asleep, I guess. But we've just had a great group of people and they've all done a great job. And through the years, all the council people, all the staff and everything, if I ever write a memoir, I'll list them all, but tonight I can only go through a few. Like I said, Jim Woolford and Bob have helped put together a great team. They've kept us financially sound. They've made us available for opportunities that have come that we've been able to take advantage of over the years. We've also had the able assistance of our city attorney, Alan Schrock, who for years has been a guiding voice and a sense of reason for the entire council. Plus, he's kept us legal, which is always a benefit. I can't go without saying that our city clerk is also leaving us after this session. And Sherry's been with us, you know, for 24 years and has been, kept me in line a lot. And I really appreciate everything she's done. She's just been a real rock. And she'll be being replaced tonight, but her assistant, I believe, is going to have a great mentor to keep her going. I think of the other people that have been mayor of Pontiac. Back when I came to town, it was Joe Traynor. I believe Joe was a Democrat, by the way, just in case, it's kind of a shock to people. And I went through Dale Campbell and then Mike Ingalls for 16 years, Scott McCoy, and then Bob Russell. I once described Bob Russell as probably the greatest cheerleader any community could have. And I believe if we could talk to the people out of Wally's, they would say the same thing. He's been guiding the city as the council and the mayor and as my call on when I need some help kind of guy, great man. And all the department heads and all their staffs, again, has just been great. I'd like to take a moment to thank my family, my wife Diana Stewart, even my grandsons Roy and Lowell have been just a big help and inspiration. As I become a footnote to the history of Pontiac, which will be very soon, I just, it's kind of bittersweet to say goodbye and at the same time, give out my heartfelt thanks to all of you and all the people I've mentioned that have done so much to make my being mayor easy. You know, I've only had a few controversies and with good guidance and good support from each side, it's been really good. I can't say much more. I'd just like to say to the city and to all the citizens, thank you for the opportunity to help our city. And I wish the best for Kelly coming in as mayor. She has a great team to work with and she has great ideas, so we will move forward and keep progressing. Other than that, I thank you and I'm just going to say, may God bless us all. I feel like Tiny Tim all of a sudden. And bless our city too. And that's it for my comments. And now it says, City Council comments.
I was just discussing this council with my son earlier this evening before I came to him. And I was telling him that we don't, we have probably the most caring people I've met in my entire life on this council that really put their hearts into everything. And Bill is one of them. And we all care. We all work at what's best for Pontiac. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
I can't let this moment pass without saying thank you for your confidence in allowing me to fill your role here in, in the ward. And I'm grateful to have had you as a mentor and hope I can continue to call you a friend.
All of you, anytime, anyplace. Bill?
Yes, I would like to thank all the city staff and all the department heads for their support and help over the years. As I look across the room back there, that guy way in the back was on Jim Melvin, he was on the council then, or Sexton, excuse me. And our attorney, Alan, who's been on longer than I have been. But I thank everybody, department heads, all the staff, all the employees. Anytime I ever read a question, you can go to them and feel comfortable they could give you the right answer or find out what it is. And the patrons of Pontiac for supporting us and me and look forward for better things to come, I'm sure, so.
Yeah.
Well, from that, thank you very much.
And Bill, thank you for your 42 years of being on the council too. With that, at this point in time, I'm going to adjourn this portion of the meeting and turn it over to Alan Schrock, who will introduce and swear in our new mayor and other people.
Thank you, Bill.
Good luck. Take care.
I, Kelly A. Edgar.
I, Kelly A. Edgar.
Having been elected to the office of mayor.
Having been elected to the office of mayor.
For the city of Pontiac.
For the city of Pontiac.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the mayor to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the mayor to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
The cattle is yours.
Oh, boy, thanks, Bill.
Don't use it on the attorney.
I did.
I know.
Congratulations.
Good. I, Kelsey Lee, I, Kelsey Lee, having been elected to the office of treasurer for the city of Pontiac, I will solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the state of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the mayor to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Carol B.
Kelsey, there's one underneath too. There's two. One for you and one for the city.
Okay. I, Carol Peters, I, Carol Peters, sir. Having been elected to the office of treasurer, having been elected to the office of treasurer for the city of Pontiac. For the city of Pontiac, you solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and the Constitution of the state of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the treasurer, the duties of the treasurer to the best of my ability. Thank you. Okay, I'll do the council people all in one fell swoop.
Okay, good deal.
Good.
Going to make us walk?
Yeah. Yep. I was ready. If you want to raise your right hand if you have to. I, Stan.
I, Scott Johnson.
Having been elected to the office.
Having been elected to the office.
Of whatever new board or alderman is.
Oh, Lord, Lord, Lord.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the alderman.
Of the alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
I guess you were, you were.
So I need to call you guys. You'll have to call.
Civic Center.
That's wonderful.
Now we can do it again.
City gets one and then one to pass back up.
Alan, you'll have to kick me when I make a mistake.
But if they do, I'm not getting out of line, I'm just helping.
What? I don't know what happened to my name, but it's okay. All right. Well, so this says swearing in of a civic.
Oh, yes.
Next. Okay, so do that first, okay. I'll just have him stand.
She'd love that.
One more thing that we got to do. Swear for council and city center authority.
Yep.
So I'll just have him stand where you are. Sorry about that. Hi.
Hi, Dr. Cooper.
As a member of the Pontiac Civic Center Authority Board.
As a member of the Pontiac Civic Center Authority Board.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A board member?
A board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
All right. Not that we've ever had a meeting. More, all right.
No standing.
I wish.
Okay. Are we set? I'll call the next meeting to order. Kelsey, roll call please.
Barb.
Here.
Jovanini?
Here.
Yep, you take me off. Right?
Lee?
Here.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Here.
Okay, and now we call to order the meeting of Civic Center Authority, having no business. I will adjourn that meeting and move on to the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look those things over? If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
One second.
Motion by Scott Cranford to approve the consent agenda, second by Jason Lee. Roll call please.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Howard.
Okay, agenda item number A is approval of the Kidsnick 2025 for use of the Chautauqua Park. Rodney? How are you tonight?
Absolutely.
Good. Tell us what you got going on.
I want to use the duck park instead of Chautauqua Park if that's possible.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the, yeah, your letter does say that, I'm just reading the agenda, so.
And also, I would like to know if you, our new mayor, is willing to be in the dunk tank.
Oh, boy. I'll have to check my calendar, but if I am available, I will be happy to do that.
Okay, I'll be checking with you too.
Okay. Fair enough.
And fire chief, and fire chief will be in the dunk tank.
I'll be in there.
And him too, back there. Jim, I did forget you. If we get approved.
Is there any discussion? Or I will entertain a motion to approve the use of Riverside Park for the Kidsnick.
I'd like to make a motion with the change that it would be Hummiston Park instead of Chautauqua Park.
Hummiston Riverside.
Riverside, Riverside. Hummiston Riverside, right. I second that.
Okay, motion by Jamie Bradshaw, second by Barb Howard. Roll call please.
Lee?
Yes.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Okay, Rodney.
Thank you.
Your work begins.
You're welcome.
Item B, approval of the IDOT Route 116 Maintenance Agreement renewal.
Yep. So we are just ending a 10-year maintenance agreement with IDOT. They sent us a letter that they are interested in renewing this maintenance agreement. This is for maintenance of Route 116 from Pearl Street to Route 66 Howard Street. And part of that maintenance agreement is that we file and fix potholes, that general type of maintenance. The, what they're offering us is based on their calculations. If you looked on page two, it says $148,454. That is the 10-year total of the maintenance agreement. And so typically, they pay us quarterly and it, that would be how, we'll send in an invoice to them and then they, we've been doing it now for a long time, so. If it's, we topped here at staff on whether it was still worth it to do this. And with 116 being newly resurfaced, we felt like if this would be a good opportunity to just reengage in that maintenance agreement. So we get a little bit over $3,500 a quarter.
Is it higher? This, this agreement higher than the last?
It is, yes. Yeah, it escalates each year. It has its own escalator built in it. Never a big escalator, but it's a little bit. What's that?
When was that last resurfaced?
Just a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And again, this is just from Pearl Street to Route 66, that one stretch, stretch of street.
I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the renewal.
Motion by John Willie, second by Barb Howard.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
You missed Barb.
Barb?
Yes.
Okay, on to item D, airport teehanger pavement project update.
Uh, you want it?
Oh, oh, yeah, ordinance 2025 O-010, I'm sorry. Item C, amending chapter 28, manufactured homes.
Oh, this is not an ordinance that you requested that I draw. So having been through the last two or three weeks dealing with Riverside, looking at the state statute, reviewing.
So having been through the last two or three weeks dealing with Riverside, looking at the state statute, reviewing our own ordinances. We have a mobile home park ordinance, but it primarily governs when somebody can open a park and how that process works and what kind of streets they have to have and getting initial license. To my knowledge, we have not been ongoing license... Having ongoing licenses for those. So we... As I mentioned in other meetings, the primary jurisdiction for enforcing manufactured home part conditions is the state of Illinois. And that's going to be the case. I can't usurp the state of Illinois. But because there's health and safety issues involved, I think the city has jurisdiction to up its involvement somewhat, if the council so desires. So what I drafted was basically, I didn't have time to redraft the entire manufactured home section article, chapter of our code. But I went to the licensing sector and added a new provision to make it clear that no newly constructed or a pre-existing park can operate without a license from the city and the state. It requires a city and the state license. Have to have a state license to get a city license. And gives us... Will give us more jurisdiction. Also, it requires certificates of occupancy for manufactured homes in that park. But only manufactured homes that are owned by the park. So if Riverside owns 30 units, then we would be inspecting those 30 units to see if they're habitable. If Redwood has 60 or 70 units and they're all owned by the individuals residing there, we won't be inspecting those. That's specifically exempt. Only park-owned ones that they're renting or selling. And knowing that one of the approaches some of the manufactured home parks have taken is to go through a written document with the owner, with the resident, that they're entering into an installment contract to buy the home rather than a lease. And then when we complain about the condition, they say, well, they're buying that home. It's not our responsibility anymore. The way this is drafted, that certificate of use and occupancy would apply to any home legally titled in the name of that. Which that means, when they're buying on contract, it's not legally titled. They're not transferring the ownership of that. So if the legal title of that manufactured home is in the park and they're paying the manufactured home tax to the county, we get a look at and operate on that. And then I've got a blank in the ordinance for what that license fee might be. I also made it annually renewable, so we get the opportunity to go take another look if you want to go that far as we go along. And we can't issue it until there's an inspection. Like I said, the condition precedent is that they have a state license and can document their state license, or they can't occupy. And then the other area was the enforcement. I made a fairly strong enforcement provision. It's on page four, subparagraph F. The provisions of this section and other provisions of the whole chapter are subject to judicial enforcement by the city, including injunctive relief. It's like saying, stop, you can't do this anymore. But stop, you've got to understand that stop, you can't do this anymore, might lead to them not doing it anymore by getting rid of the people living there. And that's... You know, there's a risk in this type of aggressive enforcement, plus a fine. We give them, I think I said, 14 days after notice of a violation to correct it. Or we can suspend their license and they're supposed to cease operation. If they wouldn't, then we go to court with that. And I've got it set up for a fine amount to be inserted. Our standard fines in the city for everything from dog violations to loud noise are $50 to $500, a range. And in this case, because then we end up with court and the judge usually goes with the low end of the range, usually, because you know, it starts to add up. I had the fine blank so you could set a specific daily amount, whether it's $50, $100, $250. And that the fine would start to run after the expiration of the notice of violation 14 days. So if there's 14 days elapsed and they haven't done anything, and we file an ordinance violation case and we prove that they're in violation of the state code, which I basically incorporated the condition situation, then we would assess a fine. Now, remember, getting a fine levied and being able to collect it are two different things. But I just prepared this and sent it over and asked Jim to put in the council packet for you folks to chew on a little bit. You don't... I'm not necessarily expecting any action one way or the other tonight. You may want to take it, read it, and think about it and bring it back the next meeting. Because you haven't had much time. It wasn't something we had talked about before and envisioned. But if you are interested in giving the city a little more involvement in this process, which is going to consume more city staff time, you know, we've given the building administrator, Greg, a lot more work to do. Because you know, if there's... You've got to do all the homework on it. We're finding out doing that homework is difficult. I did finally get my Freedom of Information Act request, but I don't know how complete it was. They gave us an inspection of Riverside from October and of Sandy Creek from December of last year. I had emailed them several times about Riverside, but they didn't manage to disclose those emails. So I don't know whether they never made in any kind of file or whatever. I was not surprised about that. I kind of had a bet with Jim, are they going to find those emails or not? And they did not. So, for what it's worth. But anyway, this is, having looked at where we're at, if we want to be able to be in a position to do more under our own ordinances, we need to upgrade our situation a little bit and understand that we can't make people do things. You can't make people follow the law. So at the end of the day, you know, enforcement could lead to, you know, the judge saying, you can't run that place anymore. And I know we have housing issues. We've talked about that a lot. And the folks that are here are some of the... That live in some of these homes are people that might have difficulty finding other housing if that happened. But by the same token, they're... What they're living in is not really suitable for humid habitation. You know, it's not... In our world, we shouldn't... People shouldn't have to live in that situation. You know, it should be better than that, I would think. So... And I didn't even talk to our new mayor about this, so she saw it when it was in the packet like everybody else.
I just have one question. Would the fine be applicable to each unit or for the park?
It would be applicable to each violation if there are multiple... If there's a violation in two units, I would say it'd be... If you want me to clarify that, I can certainly do that. But a violation, and we could file an ordinance violation on multiple violations. Lack of water, it could be one property has a sewer line backup that they're not fixing, a gas leak, they don't have gas. It could be just the general, they got a violation over all of our licensing because they're not maintaining it habitable. And we would have to look at the end of it. I think that would be a prosecutorial discretion thing. We talked to the powers that be, determine how bad it is and how strong we have to be.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering too. So can we make these fines so they're not a set fine, so they're adjustable to?
No, we can make it... If you want it adjustable, if you want the $50 to $500, I would change the wording of that to refer back to Section 1.11 of the code, which has the general penalty provision for the entire code. If you want to say, we want to make a point, we don't think $50 a day is enough for something that affects people's lives this way, I want it to be $250 a day, we can say a flat amount.
Well, I'm thinking if we can adjust it, it's more of a return.
I'd just like to say one thing. I think, Mr. Schrock, this is a perfect step to fill that void where the state has the same rules but don't enforce anything. And now we have... We filled that gap with this, and I really appreciate that. And as far as the fines, I don't want the fines to be punitive on the homeowner so much as the park owner.
Well, the park owner is who this would be. The park owner is responsible. The homeowner would have none. Because the homeowner... There's two classes of homeowners. There's the homeowner that owns their manufactured home and it's their abode. And there's the homeowner that moved into there and occupied one of the park owner's homes on a... Basically, no matter what they call it, a contract or a lease, a rental base.
So I would prefer that if the penalty is mostly onerous on the park owner, on the park owner, I would prefer that it be not $50 to $200, but start at $200 and be more, you know, be...
I would nev...
Because of the relationship we have with the current owner in that one park just tells us that...
That's illustrated why we've got our problem, that is.
That's all I want to say. I just think that's a good idea.
We would not be... I would not be going after the individual owner under this because they're... The only things under our jurisdiction are things that are park owner things. So it would be a park owner deal. And I view the people that would be the complainants as victims. Now, one thing that we also can't 100% protect if we operate on complaint. And the reason that we're trying to do something is because our staff does respond if there's a problem. They go down and inspect. We have... Greg has been very responsive. Our plumbing inspector has put an inordinate amount of his time in here and to try to address some of these problems, even on his own dime. He's tried... He's helped do some of this stuff or hired somebody out of his own pocket to correct a few things. So we do respond, and we want the people to feel like there's some consequence to that. You know, if they do make a complaint, but we don't want them to be retaliated against. And that's difficult to prove. You know, it always could be a possibility of somebody gets retaliated against if they're the ones that turned in the park.
Do we have to be complaint driven? Do we have to be complaint driven, or can we just go in when we see? Well, part of it... If you adopt it this way, part of it has a licensing inspection, so.
I have a question.
I disagree.
And we have a good form now. The state sent us their inspection form. They did do that.
I want to thank you for doing this and taking it when it needed. Thank you. But I do... I have a question. I have two questions. On page three, paragraph two, that third line where it says, "Home shall be subject to inspection from time to time." And you touched on this and said that we could set it for something like a year, which is I think what you were saying.
But if we get a complaint, we would be able to inspect midterm. That's what I meant. So if we get a complaint or we have a system, maybe we'll set up when we get into this, if we're going to take this on, maybe we'll set up a program where they do a regular non-renewal inspection, just to knock on the door sort of thing. So we could put together an inspection policy, or we could do it on complaints in between the licensing.
Would the renter have the right to tell you that we couldn't come in?
Potentially. You know, we can get a... As you know, from working with the court system, we can get an administrative warrant to be able to do that. But if the person we're trying to protect won't allow us to protect them, maybe that's not necessarily good use of our time.
But then if that's the case, then we know that there probably be pressure.
That could well be. I mean, it could well be the fate.
So for that, it might be in the renter's best interest if we set a timeframe. That way, we are knocking on the door and it's not overly apparent why we're there.
Well, now, right now, we did it annually. I mean, there would be nothing wrong if you... It's just a lot of staff time. I don't know, Greg, to be able to give you a better idea about how long there's...
How many occupied homes in Riverside?
Thirty-three occupied in Riverside.
So that's to actually go through, fill out an inspection sheet on each of those.
For every two years. I don't know what the timeframe should be.
I've got a one-year renewal. We could do a semi... We could have a semi annual inspection midterm or inspect on complaint, whatever Greg's office feels they can handle.
At least then there's a little bit of cover for the person who lives there. And the other thing I had is, you had mentioned you could refer to Code 1511 there on paragraph F on page four, like for the fees. And you said those fees go from $50 to $500?
$50 to $500. I think statutorily...
$50 to $750.
$50 to $750. I think legally, under the code, we might be able to raise that $750 to $1,000 now, but we've never done it. You know, we rarely get into... I mean, I'm not going to ask for a $750 fee for a dog that broke out of off its chain.
What would the downside then be to, instead of putting in an amount saying to refer to code? That way, per violation, we're billing a...
What happens is when you have a range, it's just like almost every other criminal type of statute. You give the judge the ability to determine what's appropriate in this case. And we have in our general code, they look at whether it's been repetition, how much damage is being done, different... We have about, I think, maybe six or seven or eight different factors for the judge to look at when they set that fine. But it does give the judge discretion, and more often than not, when we've had to do that, it's always been a long number of days because it's been a property owner that didn't clean up their property. And by the time we end up having a trial, you know, we're six months into it. And a homeowner living in a property that we're typically dealing with very likely has some limited means. And 50... 50 times 180 is still a lot of money.
So we're going to do this for Vermilion?
Yeah, this would be any... It could be for Redwood, Vermilion, St. Louis.
Okay, so I'm just thinking for Greg.
It's a lot. I mean...
Yeah, are we going to have to look at this time for temporary help? Is there someone who can be shifted? Because I... How many homes are owned in Vermilion? How many are owned in Oaks? How many? This is... It's a good thing, but...
We might be able to go to the county and find out who's getting the mobile home tax bill and get an idea of where those bills are going, what numbers they're on. But this... We can't say this is the Riverside manufactured home park ordinance. It's got to be all manufactured home parks. So you'd have Vermilion, you would have Redwood. My sense is, and I don't know this to be a fact, but my sense is that most of the manufactured homes in Redwood are owned by the occupant. And most of the homes in Vermilion, but maybe not as many as in Redwood, are owned by the occupant. So those wouldn't be under our jurisdiction. So then we'd be just checking the general part for water to... It's a fairly long... I was... I saw the checklist the state uses. It's a fairly long list of things they check.
Do we want to take this to committee to further hash out all these questions that we have?
And I would feel very good if you did, because you didn't ask me to do that. You just wanted us to figure out how we could approach it.
I think that would be...
It really is.
Yeah, yeah.
Green idea.
Thank you, Alan.
No problem.
So that would be what, financing administration? Okay, so at the end, we'll get that set up unless you want to do it now.
I think somebody could make a motion to refer it to committee.
Okay, okay.
One second.
Motion by John Willie to refer to committee and second by Jason Lee. Good start to that one. Okay, item... Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Cawzer? Yes.
Sorry, Cawzer.
Okay, we'll get there.
Okay, item number D, the Airport Tea Hanger Pavement Project Update.
This one's not as... Won't take as long. I just wanted to keep you updated on the goings on at the airport. And this, the tea hanger that we're talking about, if you're looking at the airport, it's on the left-hand side. It's the west tea hanger. It has concrete that goes up to each overhead door and in between is grass. The concrete is heaved and moved and we've tried patching it and all that. So this was on the TIPS, the Transportation Improvement Program, as one of our projects. I was notified late last week that IDOT is moving forward to this, and they weren't ready to publicly announce who won the bid, but the bid has been completed. And I'm... I know that our share of this is going to be roughly around $16,000 of a $167,000 project, so. One great thing about the Transportation Improvement Program out at the airport is that the federal government and the state play a significant role out there and we're able to get a lot of work done for, you know, a reasonable cost. And with the solar farms generating money out there, this one is easily covered by that, so.
Okay. Item number E, approval of the rebid Centennial Plaza.
And so as our last meeting, we talked about the bid from Centennial Plaza. And we brought it back after speaking with a couple of the potential bidders. We learned that some of them indicated they didn't have enough time to secure good bids. And one of them was trying to get a bid on the structure. And then that company, something internally happened there and they weren't... internally happened there and they weren't able to get it to them in time. So in talking with PGAV, who's our architect for the project, we really have nothing to lose by putting it back out for bid for another four weeks. And then we'll see how it goes from there and we can make new determinations after that, if that's your wish.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve putting out a rebid for Centennial Plaza.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Jamie Bradshaw, second by Scott Cranford to rebid. Roll call, please.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Causor?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Item number F, approval of the LSC signage for trucks on North Locust Street. Chris, take it away.
Good evening. As Alderman Willie mentioned at the committee meeting the other night, we discussed some issues we're having on North Locust Street from Indiana to C Street, which is the entrance to the loading dock at the printing company. We've had several concerns from residents in the area of trucks, semi trucks going up and down that street, which typically is no big deal, other than that street is, particularly from Michigan Avenue to C Street, is an A3, which is fairly narrow as it is. But there's a pretty good tree canopy through those couple blocks, so the trucks are forced down the middle of the street. And with it being an A3, we really don't want semi, constant semi traffic on that street anyway. So we're proposing to put some signage in place to at least guide them to Main Street. The issue is pretty much from vehicles coming from the east. Over the years, we've had issues with them trying to get into the employee entrance, which they can't access the loading docks from there, so they continue down Aurora Street to Indiana and then use Locust. And then we have semis that come in off of 116 and use Indiana Avenue and then try to go up Locust Street. So our goal is to just guide them to Main Street and get them back up on a more stable street to access the loading dock. So we would do that by installing road signs, much like we have out on Pontiac Road, and hope that helps. It's hard to enforce something like that because otherwise you'd have to have an officer there all the time to do that. But we're going to hope this is a cost-effective way to deter them from using Locust Street to access a dock.
Is there anything that we can do with GPS mapping systems that would, because that's how they're getting there.
Right. Yeah, I don't know how that would.
I don't either.
What, do we have a set ordinance or anything for truck traffic on unmarked roads or marked roads or?
Typically, our rule is 10 tons on city streets unless they're otherwise posted, aside from local deliveries. So for example, like the garbage trucks that are in town would be in excess of that weight And any, any truck that's making a delivery locally, like to a house or to something like that, we tend to let them do that. Really only halfway established truck route would be Torrance Avenue and Mill Street to Reynolds. It gets people from the, that side of town to the west side. So in effect, we'd be making kind of a dedicated truck route for, for the printing company.
And so do we have an ordinance for truck routes or anything?
I don't recall that that's in our code, but they're hard to, hard to enforce. We don't have scales typically and.
Oh, I mean, I'm talking about use of the roads. I mean.
Yeah. Well, we can, we have the right to post the roads and we have the right to post if it's a route, you know, I assume we don't have a, an LSC, it's Stener or something else now, it's got another name on it.
Well, my question is because other cities on 55 made ordinances for these truck routes and stuff and when they go off those ordinances, when they go off of those routes, they're, the fines are high and if it's a city ordinance.
Yeah, and I don't think we've got, I don't think we've got ordinance established truck routes.
Should we?
We could. I mean, somebody has to come up with what's suitable to do it, gets everybody where they have to go. There's some practicality, people have to get to certain places.
We're paying for the streets and they're getting all scot-free.
That's probably a good thing for committee to discuss and do a little research of other communities and see where we're at, just thinking, I don't know what 4-H Park Road status is, but that, you know, you got to get the cat, that's the only way.
Right.
So there are certain places, there's only one way to get there. The LSC or whatever the new name is, has a couple alternatives potentially, but we've had issues before with trucks going the wrong place. I've been doing it a long time, we had a few of them. And we've prohibited, I think we have a prohibition for air braking and that sort of thing, and I think we did an ordinance for that. No, we can certainly take a look at it and see what other communities have done and see how the street folks would, in their most favorite world, suggest we do it.
And it's easy for squad cars to make that on their route.
Because they do do, they do do damage, you know, the weight, if they do a turn that's not with an inappropriate radius and drag, they cause a lot of damage to asphalt, especially in the summer. So I mean, it is damaging.
Yeah, and most RA3 streets are, are rough on that. Those trucks are, they'll handle it, but it's like we did on, on South Chicago with the school buses. When we redid that, we directed them to use the concrete road.
They've been compliant.
No trucks on that.
Yeah, and they, and they do a good job of sticking to that.
If we put up signs for this and, and it continues to be a problem, would we, do you think we'd know? Like the people who have told us before would let us know?
I'm sure the people that have been contacting me would be sure to.
So if the signs aren't enough, we'll have more opportunities?
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I would think you'd talk to the company and try them with the people that are doing acquisitions and they should be able to advise, are they mostly company trucking people or are they independent trucking? They're just have loads brought in.
We tried that, well, several years ago when we were having issues, because we were having issues with them using Main Street quite a bit. And it was, especially at this corner, it was tight trying to get a semi to make that corner. So we did talk to them and it is difficult because they don't know which trucking companies are bringing their deliveries and things like that. I think the signage on Pontiac Road has helped some. I know they still make it down around the Ready Mix and they miss a sign and have to turn around in those lots there.
And I know they struggle at County Market when they're trying to back into the dock there. Man, you got to be a good driver.
Streets are prepared for that.
The main issue there is that, you know, once you get past Michigan Avenue, that road gets pretty narrow.
Mm-hmm. Very.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion for anything?
Take it to committee? Could we do that?
In the meantime, can we put up signs?
Well, the signs, I heard there's no negative to the signs, although the signs may be different if we were to post for truck routes or no truck traffic on a road if we designated it that way. Sign, would your signage be wasted if you did the signs what you're thinking about and they came back and did something different?
No, we make our own signs, so it would not be a problem to re-sheet them and.
I'd certainly motion to put the sign there and take another look at it if complaints get.
Wait a second.
Okay, so motion by Mike Barr, second by Jerry Causor, to do the signs and then perhaps revisit.
And probably the chief is taking notes. He may tell his officers to help, at least remind these people of pay attention to the signs.
Roll call, please.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Causor?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
For annual budget meetings, a new squad car is, has proven to be a worthwhile purchase in that we replace a, our oldest in the fleet and it tends to cut down on a lot of our maintenance costs throughout the year. The fleet vehicle that has a state bid, the agency we usually go through in Madison, Illinois, we've had no problems with them. However, I recently learned that Dwight Ford is wanting to expand their fleet vehicle program. So I called to obtain a quote and they were able to quote a significant discount in order to spur some business. Long story short, a new 2025 Ford Police Interceptor with a wiring harness for all the lights and sirens and things. Out the door cost is $50,286 and that is almost $1,000 lower than our state bid agency who we've worked with the past few years. Like I said, it's a budgeted out of my new equipment line item, so I'm basically requesting authorization to purchase a vehicle and to use Dwight Ford as this year's agency.
Any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Wait, I have a question.
Okay.
Once we get it, do we have to like do things to it?
We'll still have to do a little bit every few years. You can use a lot of the equipment from the outgoing car, but every few years it kind of switches the specs a little bit where certain things won't work on the new ones. So we use a third-party outfitter to, the backseat cages are usually our biggest headache and I believe the current one will work on the new one this year. But there will be some odds and ends that'll need to be replaced.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
I'm actually going to make a motion.
Okay, so Barb?
That's okay. Either one.
And then Jamie. Roll call, please.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Causor?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item H, approval of the rec center elevator upgrade. Looks like Gary's going to tell us about that fun necessity.
Good evening, council, mayor. The current elevator that we have at the rec center is the original elevator that was placed when the building was built. TK Elevator out of Peoria has done the maintenance on it over the years. Brief history, back in 20, December of 2019, they let us know, the Parks Department know that soon the parts would become obsolete and to start preparing for that to happen in May of 2022, they reminded us of that. And at that point, sent a letter that said, would, parts would soon be unavailable, critical parts for the elevator would be available likely around June 23. That day has basically arrived here in 2025 now. So with this quote from TKE for $95,500 is a, what they call a modernization of the current elevator. It is, basically it will replace the components, the mechanical components and the computer components of the elevator. Lifespans of elevators are 25 years and we're right at that. The make and model of the current elevator is obsolete. Parts and replacement of any sort with that are very, very difficult to find at this point. And it is a requirement, since we have the track upstairs for ADA, for us to be able to have our clients access that. So the timeline on this, as I've talked to the TK, TK Elevator out of Peoria is various. If we decide to do it on our own and say, yes, we want to get this modernized, then we can have them come in during the slow time of the year, which is approaching for the rec center, as opposed to the winter months. Would, if it would possibly break down, then we would be reacting to that and it could be a little bit of some chaos there with the numbers that come in during the winter months. But we're looking at roughly four to six weeks for them to come in and survey the materials, get the materials ordered. Additional nine weeks for fabrication of time. This is all fluctuated based on what they can get their hands on. And then three to five weeks to get it in place and finish it up and wrap it up. So it is a lengthy process from what I understand, but again, if we can move forward on it sooner than later, we have that time and ability while we're in a downtime to be able to have that and still be able to access the current elevator until, knock on wood, something does break that we can't replace or they can't replace with that. Questions?
How many, Jim, how many elevator companies have we dealt with besides this one?
Yeah, so in looking at this project, because this is a TK elevator and it's a modernization rather than a re-elevating, which would be much more expensive than this, this would, we'd call this a sole source project, which would require at least two-thirds vote from the council. And that would be our recommendation is that we use TK elevator and modernize this. We did budget it, it's TIF 1 project. And also it was my understanding that the elevator we have has had a few issues where it wasn't quite stopping all the way at the top. And so we, that's why during the budget season, we talked about, we needed to push this one up finally and get it taken care of.
Is there any kind of warranty with the upgrade?
There is a one-year warranty with all parts and labor.
But it does say they don't include any preventive maintenance on, on the elevator. Did we, we did an elevator in the library a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Same sort of issue we had where we did buy a new one. I think we made repairs and things like that.
And they're required to be inspected every year. We get them certified and.
So the timeline's 16 weeks out?
Give or take, yeah. Right now, like I said, we're moving into our slower time, so if we, if council approved this tonight, we would jump on it and they would start the wheels in motion to get that so that by the time fall rolls around, we'll have the modernization complete.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Scott Cranford, second by Jamie Bradshaw. Roll call, please.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Causor?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Gary, can I ask you a question? I haven't heard much lately. What's the status on the Recplex playground thing? When is that supposed to start? Didn't we?
No, we didn't approve anything.
We're still, we're still working on that?
Yeah.
I was wondering.
Yeah, we haven't done anything with that. We're, I have implemented going around to each playground, I've been doing inspections and starting that process.
Okay.
Okay, last item on the agenda is Crescent Cinema. I assume Jim's going to give us a little update on that.
Yes, so I don't have a whole lot, but I thought it was a hot topic in town and we should at least give you some information if you've read Daily Leader's article. He was able to get ahold of Sharon Lawson, who said that the theater would be temporarily closed. And I have made numerous emails and phone calls to Sharon, I haven't got any responses. So, but I have had conversation, I know Chris did as well, talking to Mr. McLean, Tom, who was the manager who ran the theater. And basically, what basically happened was you have to get a license to show the movies and that license was not renewed. And so he wasn't able to put in the key to show the next set of movies. And then was told by Sharon that they were going to temporarily pause. And if you've read the Leader article, they indicated that she mentioned her, that Peter has some health issues. And so I, we don't know what's going on and I continue to reach out and we'll continue to talk to them about what their plans are for the theater so we can develop any plans of our own to either help with that process or help move along to someone else who wants to use it as a theater. I think right now our thought is, staff's thought is, having a theater in the downtown is a fantastic thing. So if we're able to continue that process, that's really what we would like to do.
Any questions?
Do Lawson's own or lease that building?
They own.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, on to mayor's comments. Bear with me, I have a few things I want to share, since this is my first chance to talk. So my husband is still here and I need to thank him for giving me the thumbs up to come on this adventure because if he hadn't have said, yes, it's okay, I would not be sitting here. I'm pretty lucky that I have three daughters who are raising families here in Pontiac. That's not a very com- That's not a very common thing anymore for people to come back, and so it's important to me to make a better future for Pontiac for them. Bill has left, but thanks to him for his dedication to the city, uh, he certainly has earned a retirement from service to Pontiac. Sherry, thanks for 24 years of listening without comment. Uh, I don't know how you did it, to be honest, I, it had to be pretty darn hard to sit there and just look at, she'd look up at us once in a while with that.
There were times that I was holding my eyes roll.
Yeah. We have a great city administration, staff and council, and a good working team here, like Bill said, I'll echo. Um, as I see Bob Carles out there, I'll, I'll give him a shout-out too, because, um, he's really been, um, critical in my, uh, role on the council and moving into this position. I probably couldn't have done it without a lot of his guidance. I want to focus on planning and communication and try to get our citizens more engaged. Um, it's time, time to brush off the dust and reveal all of the good things we have here in Pontiac, and there is a lot of it. Um, so let's work together to focus on a better future, looking through the windshield, not the rearview mirror. Um, so often we talk about the past, but it's the past, and there's lots of better things that we can do moving forward. One of the first tasks that I have is to replace those two seats that are sitting over there. I'm gonna try to do a little bit different and put out an application process that I will open up for about 10 days for people who are interested to fill out an application, and provide a little bit of detail about why they might be interested, and then, um, maybe engage some council members to help in that process. I've kind of started working on it, and I hope to have it go ready next Monday, and then be open for basically that 10-day period. Um, we have 60 days, but really it's important that we fill those quickly. So if anybody, if you talk to people within the ward, um, that might be interested, encourage them to, um, to give it a try. I will also, um, look for a couple of people who would mentor those individuals and help them learn, because when you come on, you don't really, if you've never even sat in a meeting, you don't know what to do, and so I think it will be beneficial if we work together with those people. I met with Jim Friday and shared a few of my goals, and I made copies here, um, for everybody that wants one, but, um, I'll just kind of go through the highlights of a few things that I hope that we can accomplish in the next six months. My first order of business that I asked is for a city organizational chart. We don't have anything that's visible right now for people, I think it kind of exists in many minds, and maybe the departments all have it, but overall, um, so, we're gonna, Jim's gonna work on that, it'll be relatively easy to do, he said, so. Um, committee assignments, uh, I've got a questionnaire, I would like everyone to just write what you, if you want to stay on the committees you're on, and, um, or if you have something else that you would like to do. If, um, my goal is to set a regular meeting schedule for every other month, and so I also ask for the times that you are interested, when you're best available, days, times, so maybe we can get some established meetings, and the department heads then will know that, you know, we can, we may have to change, but, uh, let's give it a try in the beginning. I want to do a good look at the bike trail plan that we have and find out why we aren't getting things moving on it. Brian and I have talked a little bit, but I'd like to be able to, um, know where we're going with this, um, sooner rather than later. Downtown vision, we have a lot of spaces that we're looking to make changes to, and I think we need to give a good look before we make decisions to make everything cohesive instead of piecemeal, um, so it might call for a committee of the whole pretty soon, so that we could get that organized. It may not mean that we're gonna start anything soon, but at least we, you know, let's not do something in Block 59 that's not gonna go with what we're doing on Madison Street, that's not gonna go with what we're doing in, in Centennial Plaza. It's kind of like when you remodel your bathroom and then you gotta paint the walls in the hallway and that kind of stuff. I, and this is after I walked around town on the housing study, I find that we have a lot of unkept properties and such, and some that people have tried to take action on, and so I just want to see us make a review of what our codes and things are, and maybe we can't do anything more than we already are, but if we come up with a process so that people know, it's kind of like the trailer parks, um, if we have a process that people know how it's gonna work, um, they might be more willing to, because we can't, we can't see everything, um, but there's just a lot of it. I would like to review our infrastructure plan, maybe each ward, look at what we have planned, we have a good plan in place for the next five years, but, um, perhaps there might, we might have some additional funds that we can get made available this year to maybe do some additional sidewalks, or if there's time, if we can get people, um, I mean, there's all kinds of factors, but I would like to review that pretty soon. Um, and to that vein, also take, take time to meet and come up with a five-year strategic plan for our TIF funds. Um, I have a target completion of that by October 1st, because TIF is gonna expire, and we talk about it all the time, and let's put on piece of paper really what we want to do for the next five years and get accomplished, and work hard to get there, um, so that when it's over, um, we've managed to do a lot with it. And then the last thing is, uh, develop a youth advisory panel, I want to host a session of reversing the Exodus. Um, it's a, it's a program put on by the, um, Illinois Extension Office, I actually attended one last summer over in Woodford County, and, um, they put together a panel of young people in the community, and it was, Barb and I went, it was a really good session, but it, it's, it's critical for all the, the decision-makers in our area, county officials, I mean, it's, it's not just Pontiac, but, um, we need to understand what the generations of people that are gonna be doing in the future, um, what works for them, because it's not necessarily what works for us, and if we can put our minds in their mind when we're making the decisions, it might, it might take us a long way, um, towards creating a better, uh, engagement with the citizens, because they don't think we listen to them, and so I, I'm working on trying to get that session set up in August, and, um, out of it, I've learned, I've talked with a couple other communities, they, they got a youth panel established after this session that helped advise them, or even took off and ran with the programs themselves, and in one particular community, they ended up creating a 501(c)(3) themselves, and they're like running all their downtown programs, um, and very successfully, so, not meaning that's gonna happen here, but, um, I really think it's important that, I mean, my own kids, I, I have their ear all the time, and they, you know, the things that we're doing, they, they're like, Mom, it's just, it's not, it doesn't work for our, our age group anymore, and, um, so we, we, we really need to start hearing those voices, and, um, so, that's my last, um, thing, that I, I, I have a, um, I have a lot of hope for us being able to, to get a lot accomplished, and I hope I don't wear myself out, so, anyway. Or, but, but all the people back here, I don't want to step on toes, I, you all have, you all do your job so well, I, 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 I want us all to be partners, um, and you need to come to us when you need things too, so. With that, uh, city administrator com, or city council comments, I'm sorry, I can't read. Anybody?
Congratulations.
Frank?
I'm not entirely comfortable with the, uh, Centennial Plaza.
Okay.
Project, I think it's expensive, I don't know what it's going to do for, go blow on the street, and, uh, I, I think it's something that should be more organic and turned over to, uh, some people in St. Louis who are out of town, I mean, there, there should be enough ideas in this community to, to develop it, and, um, anyway.
Well, we'll see how the bids go, and then if we don't get what we want, then we may be doing more like what you're thinking about anyway, so. Anybody else? Okay, city administrator.
Here are a few things, and I'll make it quick. Uh, just a note, uh, if you saw across the street, the kiosk, um, that we got on a grant for, uh, visitors to direct them to, uh, food shopping and, um, dining, I mean, sleeping, um, that's being installed, and I don't, was it? Yeah, it's installed, now we're waiting on the power. Okay. So that, that'll be a, a neat addition across the street. For the council and for the community, tomorrow at 2:00 PM, there's a ribbon cutting for the donated blue bicycle racks that have been placed in the downtown area, uh, that will happen at 2:00 PM at Block 59, at the bike rack that has the Fix-It station by it, it's the one that was down by where Santa's house is. Uh, those were donated to us by the Mid Illinois Realtors Association, and, uh, that will, that will be a good event, I know, I've seen, you know, you see the blue bikes, and I've had people ask me, are they just art? No, they're, actually, you can lock your bike to them, so. And then, I had note that the carnival, uh, that was done for first night, that was a, uh, project for them, made approximately $7,600 to first night, or to last night, I'm sorry, to last night, and, but that's not including some of the costs, like, uh, porta-potties and things like that, so, uh, they'll end up, uh, over $5,000, maybe $6,000. And then last thing I included in your packets that wasn't on the agenda, I just got this late, if anybody wants to take a look at it, they can too, uh, we were noticed, notified by Trajectory Energy of their application for a new solar farm, this is on 4-H Park Road directly adjacent to, uh, Motorola Drive. If you remember, just west of that, there's already one that was approved to go out there, so, we're gonna have two large solar farms right there up against 4-H Park Road. I haven't gotten the notice from the county zoning yet on that, on that, when that is, so I'll reach out to them and see if we have a, if, we know a date for that, so, just wanted to make you aware of that as well, because that, we'll get asked the questions, but that piece of property is not within the corporate city limits.
Okay, public comment. Anybody out there wanna bend our ear? Nope? Okay. So do we need to set a committee meeting for that?
Yep.
Do we want to make a committee meeting for the mobile home ordinance?
Yes.
Finance and administration?
Yes.
So lately, we've been doing them on either Tuesdays or Wednesdays?
It's a finance committee though, right?
So.
Finance administration, yep.
Causser Howard Lee is what's left on that right now.
Anytime, 5:30 or after, but, uh, what days are we thinking, like, next week, or?
I've gone next week.
Yeah, we can do next week.
You're gone next week?
We're leaving Wednesday, tomorrow, Wednesday, for a week.
Tuesday? Could it be Tuesday? I mean.
I could do Wednesday of next week.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said you left.
I can do Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, I think.
Okay.
I'm good anytime.
Wednesday, the 14th?
I can do the 14th if it's at 6:00 or after. By 5:00 you're after.
The 49?
No, not happening.
It's not your committee, but you want to be there.
I do want to be there.
Okay, that's good.
So we're thinking 6:00 o'clock?
6:00 o'clock on Wednesday, the 14th.
Okay.
Okay. And that actually works out because Jade is supposed to be here on the 13th, and hopefully we'll have some new information by then.
Good, so I'll pop into, I'll pop into that meeting, not yours, but yours.
Okay.
I'll try to come to that one.
With that being said, I'll call for an adjournment motion. Scott Cranford, Jason Lee. Meeting adjourned. Did I pass?